I will call to order, Wilsonville-
I will call to order, Wilsonville City Council meeting for September 6th, 2018, at 7:11 PM, and request a roll call, please.
Counselor Stevens?
Here.
Counsel President Starr?
Here.
Counselor Lehan?
Here.
Mayor Knapp?
Here.
And Counselor Akrevall is excused.
Thank you. Would the audience please rise and join us in a pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for I would be open to a motion on order of agenda.
Your Honor, I move that we approve the order of agenda.
Second.
Moved in second, we approve order of agenda. Copies are available to the public on the side of the room, over there. Don't see a rush toward the side of the room, but that's all right. Let's start with citizens' input and community announcements, which is an opportunity for visitors to address counsel on things not on the agenda, or also a time to address things are on the agenda but not scheduled for public hearing. Staff and counsel will make every effort to respond to questions raised during citizens' input, either before tonight's meeting ends or as soon as possible thereafter. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak? I have not received any notification. Don't see any, so I will move along, I think, to mayor's business. And let's see here. If I can find the rolling schedule. Next council meeting is September 17, a Monday again, back on our regular schedule, at 7:00, Monday, September 17, upcoming in two weeks. The other thing I need to do is check my calendar here. When was our last council meeting? City council meeting?
Twenty, August-
The 20th, okay, all right. So that was our Kitakata delegation visit, and we had a couple of days that were full of Kitakata events, which was really quite gratifying to have all that discussion with our friends and neighbors from halfway around the world, and I was pleased at all the different special things we did with them. So I thought it was a great thing. We all were invited to be sure to come to Tokyo for the 2020 Olympics, so we just have to figure out how to do that. Also, met with the Metropolitan Mayor's Group, and also with the Greater Portland Inc. Small Cities Consortium, and had good discussions at both those places. The housing bond was a point of discussion with the mayors particularly. Also had an opportunity to attend a coffee downtown on electric vehicles that was being hosted by Portland General Electric, along with Senators Wyden and Merkley, both in attendance, talking about the programs that might facilitate those. Had a meeting with PGE CEO Maria Pope, that we had been planning for some time, also had staff involved in meeting with she and her government affairs assistant, and talked about ways they could interface with the city. I thought it was very good dialogue we hadn't had in some time. Had an opportunity then, Greater Portland Inc., the Economic Development Group, has been working to try to gain some exposure, so we were able to meet with the CEO of FLIR Systems here in Wilsonville, along with GPI, and Jordan Vance, our Economic Development Manager, and a couple of other people that came also. It was a very interesting discussion, very candid. The CEO is a gentleman that is, as he puts it, lives on an airplane. He's in Washington DC as much or more than he's here officially. His home is in Tennessee, I think it is, so he is all over the place. But he has got very significant plans for FLIR, which is headquartered locally, and they're already on a pretty strong growth curve since he's been in that chair about a year, and their capitalization has almost doubled in a year, and so they're looking at a lot of things, some unexpected things. They're working on their kind of public, what, donations or support. They are partnered with World Wildlife Fund to equip park rangers in Kenya with night vision gear to try to stop the poaching of rhinoceruses. They're doing equipment and training on a major scale. He says it's literally a war. They believe that most of the $35,000 or $40,000 per rhinoceros that is being poached is going into terrorist funds in various different operations around Africa and beyond. And so you wouldn't think that a local Wilsonville company would be kind of front and center on that scale, but I'm here to tell you, they are. And so there's some very interesting things that go on that we may not really be aware of, but they are part of our community, and they very much appreciate being here. They see this as the center. All of their aircraft mounting systems are done here locally, even though components come from different centers around the country where they have people. And they say they don't see that changing, and that could imply growth here locally. They're very strong on their workforce locally, and I think it's got a very potentially strong future. So it was very nice to make that connection with a local industry that we don't normally interface with too much. And that was a good move. We had the employee picnic, I think, and appreciate, didn't get a chance to speak because I had to run off to appointment, but the employee picnic is always a great thing, and always am really humbled by the amount of work and dedication that our staff has to the work that they do here in our city. And you know that the city we have would not be the same without that level of dedication. So I didn't get a chance to speak, but I'm saying it now. I really appreciate the staff we have and the commitment and the professionalism that I see in so many different departments, so that's a big piece of Wilsonville, too. All right, enough of that. I'll pass along then to councilors for any comments you would like to make. Counselor Starr?
Just have one announcement, and that would be on September 15th, Metro Hazardous Waste Collection Day, 9 to 2, and that's here at Wilsonville City Hall. So, not a whole lot going on.
Okay. Counselor Stevens?
Yes, I hope to attend the next library board meeting. That's September 26. Usually at the September meeting, we get the statistics for the summer programs, which are always, you know, astounding, how many youth participate in the summer reading programs, how many have attended the Story Times and different events the library puts on, so hopefully I'll be bringing that back at the next meeting, at the October, first October meeting. The other thing I wanted to make sure people are aware of is an event in two days, two days from now, on Saturday. The mayor talked about it in his message to the community in the Boons Ferry Messenger, and then there's a whole page about emergency preparedness. But this Saturday, at the LDS Church, just down the street here, between City Hall and the post office, on the other side of the street, at 29350 Town Center Loop East, is an emergency preparedness workshop, from 11:00 to 2:00. It's free to anybody who wants to come, and these are really important workshops, I think, for people to attend, to learn more about what they can prepare for any kind of disaster. And it's not even just an earthquake. It could be a windstorm, or our electricity goes out for an extended period of time. We just have to be ready for those kinds of things. In my, you know, my work life, I dealt with this quite a bit with the community in Charbonneau. They do have two speakers coming, and two, at this event. At 11:15, there's a woman coming to talk about water readiness, you know, what do you do if, you know, you don't have good drinking water, just to come out of your tap? How do you have enough supply? How do you purify water? Those kinds of things. And then at 12:45, is another speaker talking about keeping ourselves and our families safe in the event of an emergency or disaster. So there's always, I always learn some, I've been to so many of these events, but there's always something new to learn, and the information sometimes even changes and gets better as different professionals are learning more about how we can, what we can do to keep, to be self-sufficient, because sometimes you do, you don't have the, the first responders are able to come. So you have to be ready to be able to take care of yourself. So I just recommend that. That's this Saturday, at the LDS Church on Town Center Loop East, September 8, from 11:00 AM to 2:00 PM. That's all. Thank you.
Thanks very much. Counselor Lehan?
Yes, I was just going to say, for probably a lot of people who travel I-5 have noticed that what has been referred to as the Elixen House, south of Costco, has disappeared, on the Elixen property, but I have come to find out, it actually was the Bittner House who built it, not the Elixens who never actually lived there, I believe. But anyway, property has been purchased by Cisco, who are doing a major expansion in that direction, and it is a property that we, the city, hung on to as industrial land when it has been proposed for commercial at different times. And I think it's excellent that we have, we're able to hold firm on it being industrial so that big industrial users who really need that kind of space can use it. Like especially, and I think especially when it is one of our local businesses that can do that expansion. But we did lose the house, lost the barn. I went out, met with the Cisco crew, and with Burton at the library, and we crawled under the house, and up in the attic, and all through, and took pictures all over the house, inside and out, as well as the barn, the architectural pieces of it that are unique, and those will eventually end up in the library, since the city is trying to record buildings like that before they go down, so that we have a photographic record of them. And in that regard, you probably saw in the front of the spokesman, that the Historical Society, with their grant, Metro and Community Enhancement Grant, has hired an archivist from the Warm Springs Tribe, has a lot of experience with archiving really old things, but he's going through the archives at Wilsonville, try to make them, not only get them more organized and stored more appropriately, but also more accessible to the public. So as we collect a bigger photographic record, it's accessible to the public, accessible to businesses, if they want a picture to decorate something, whether it's the recent past or the far away past, it should be available. And so that, and we want the public to know that there's a place to donate things, if you have memorabilia or photos, especially now of the more recent history, of the 1970s, the 1980s, the 1990s, a lot of that is, ends up getting lost, and then we just end up with the 18, 90 pictures, and nothing 100 years later, it's all gone. So we want people to understand they can donate that, and it will be accessible at the library or elsewhere, online. So, there you go.
That's great. I had a chance to tour Cisco also recently, and our Economic Development people did, and was part of that tour. It's quite an operation. They run a whole lot of coolers and refrigerators, so it's a major electrical user, but-
You don't get too hot if you work at Cisco.
No, you don't. Their plant size, or their parcel size, will double with this acquisition. And they started planning, and actually started talking to the property owner about that adjacent parcel 12 years ago. So they said they're planning for exactly how they're going to expand, you know, needs to be brought up to date, because the plan they had 12 years ago is not the plan that really makes sense today. They bring people from all over the Western US into this facility in Wilsonville to train, so they're a heavy user of hotels, motels, restaurants, a lot of public services here, and it looks like that may expand. Their fleet size and their truck fleet center may expand. They didn't commit to any specific pieces, but they talked about these different parts of their operation. They're so integral to Wilsonville, and it seems pretty significant, so.
Mayor, I did, might want to add on, because I did that tour with you.
Yes.
And I picked up on the fact that they said that they're looking at this site as a kind of blank canvas, and that they might want to do some innovative things out there. So I reported that back to Mr. Namsoo, to make sure that, as they're going through the design review process, that we try and see what we can, because that is a highly visible parcel, obviously.
And also, as everyone in the community knows, the oak tree mysteriously died, the big oak tree, but there is a very nice oak grove there, and of course, there aren't any plans yet, but the Cisco people that I was talking to said that what they would like to have as a part of the plan is to preserve at least a significant portion of that grove for an employee kind of park or outdoor area for them to use.
Natural area.
And the other thing I wanted to note was that they did make a point of showing us their training room, as the mayor mentioned, and did mention that that is available upon, you know, request with, you know, reasonable notice, and obviously they have the right to say no, but for a community-type thing. So it's something that, you know, we might want to just think about in terms of if we have a need for that. And I didn't know that they controlled 18% of the market that they're in, that's significant.
That's major.
And it's right here in Wilsonville.
What'd they say, they serve all the way virtually to the Canadian border, up through Washington, and all the way down to the Canadian bor, or the California border to the south, so they have a pretty wide distribution area, those trucks are going out of there every day.
Another reminder on how important I-5 is, and what's not happening right now as far as traffic, and how we need to keep pushing to make that a vibrant piece of-
Exactly.
Makes Wilsonville attractive.
And just to buttress what Counselor Lehan said, how important it is to keep your spine steel when it comes to preserving industrial land, because it really is important, especially when you have existing industrial users.
Yeah. Yeah. All right, so interesting things going on. Counselor Akrevall is away at the moment, so we will look to hear from her when she returns. That brings us to consent agenda, if we could, please.
Resolution number 2687, a resolution of the City of Wilsonville authorizing the city manager to execute a construction contract with Paul Brothers, Inc., for the Memorial Park, Dog Park, and Community Garden Parking Lot Project. Minutes of the July 16, 2018, August 6, 2018, and August 20, 2018, council meeting.
So consent agenda items are not individually discussed. If anyone feels like they want to discuss those items, then a motion to remove something from the agenda would be appropriate. Otherwise, a motion on the entire combined list of consent agenda as has been read would be appropriate.
I move to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Moved in second, we approve consent agenda as read, consisting of Resolution 2687, and plus the prior minutes as listed. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes 4-0, bringing us to public hearings.
Ordinance number 818 on First Reading, an ordinance of the City of Wilsonville appealing and replacing Chapter 8 environment of the Wilsonville Code, and to repeal ordinance number 482.
So I will call to order a public hearing on ordinance number 818. Ladies and gentlemen, the, this isn't the right one.
Should be legislative script.
Yeah, this is the urban renewal script.
Do we not have the legislative script?
I could wing it.
Well, all you have to do is just open the public-
Counsel will take public testimony tonight on a public hearing format, which will be conducted as follows. First, staff will present their report, then we will receive testimony by proponents, opponents, and those neither in favor nor against the proposed ordinance. If you wish to testify, please complete a speaker card from the counter at the side of the room, pass it forward to the city recorder. When called, come forward to the microphone, state your name and address. Thank you. And make your statement. I request those providing testimony not repeat testimony already given, simply indicating your agreement with certain prior testimony is entirely sufficient. So we will begin with a city staff report. Good evening.
Thank you, Mayor Knapp, and councilors. I am Amanda Guile Hinman, Assistant City Attorney for the City of Wilsonville. I'm also joined by Carrie Rappold, who's our Natural Resources Manager. So tonight, we are discussing, at this public hearing, the revisions to the Wilsonville Code, Chapter 8, regarding the environment.
So the reason we're before you tonight is to present some revisions to the code in regards to stormwater management. We have a program where, you know, we work within the city to find, well, to work with violations that occur, and sometimes it gets very problematic in terms of how we can deal with these situations and the tools that we have. And so that's part of the reason for the revisions that we're bringing to you, just because we've had some situations that have been very prolonged and very difficult to resolve at times, and so we want to just have, you know, the ability to deal with that more effectively and more efficiently.
And as part of that process, we realized that there were other parts of this chapter that needed some cleanup, particularly with definitions that were used throughout the chapter and some other cleanup items, you know, instead of referring to the mayor as "he," using gender-neutral pronouns and the like.
So tonight, we're going to discuss some of these revisions with you. They primarily address the erosion and prevention and sediment control regulations that we have. We've added some elements to that, that we think it makes it more useful. And then primarily, what we're doing in terms of the enforcement procedures that we have for stormwater violations, and then some housekeeping matters. So in regards to erosion prevention and sediment control, we've put into the code some items that address the type of plans that need to be submitted, how they meet those requirements as far as erosion and sediment control, the actual permit that would be issued. We do issue an ESC permit as part of most construction projects, and then it outlines the inspection requirements, whether those are the responsibility of the person with the permit, or what the city will do to ensure that the measures are being followed and the plans being followed. And so in regards to the stormwater enforcement regulations, this is something that's delegated certainly to city staff, and, you know, we work with a system that, you know, we receive complaints, or, you know, there are a lot of inspections that just happen with local operations within the city, as far as seeing how these stormwater systems are being maintained, and whether they're having impacts certainly to our public storm system, or to our receiving creeks and the river. And so it clarifies basically how we can get access to properties in terms of right-of-entry, who we need to notify, work with. Also, it outlines, as it says, the requirements for, you know, the actual enforcement actions, if we have to elevate it to that level. We try to work as closely with people in the community to avoid enforcement. We want to provide guidance, we want to provide support in terms of what they're doing, but sometimes, you know, we end up in situations where there's a disagreement about what's necessary, and, you know, whether they feel there is an actual impact to the system. And so this lays out more specifically, it takes a section that was about a paragraph long, and puts it into a number of pages, which I think ultimately is going to help not only the staff responsible for doing this, but I think it'll be a benefit to the people that are dealing with these enforcement actions, because it lays out, you know, the different types of civil penalties we have, but we also have the ability to issue stop-work orders, where we can get an immediate, you know, correction to what's occurring. And then it lays out, you know, the procedures for abatement, what they would have to do to correct that immediately. And then, you know, we also have the ability, if they've been issued some type of permit by the city, that we could basically terminate that in order that future work doesn't occur. And so that could be a construction site where, you know, they have erosion control measures that are not effective, or are not being maintained. But I think what's really helpful, too, is it lays out, you know, the appeal procedure that somebody can follow if they feel like the enforcement action, you know, wasn't something they agree with. And then also, as far as the civil penalties, there's a really good section, I feel, that talks about kind of, how do we look at this in terms of, you know, the severity of it? And there's different factors that come into play that we look at, whether there had been past violations, the gravity of the violation. So I think it really lays that out, you know, nicely, in terms of somebody being able to look at that and understand, you know, what, you know, what rights they have in terms of something like this happening. And it gives us a means to judge, you know, the severity and, you know, the history behind something like this.
So that brings us to the housekeeping matters that were also addressed. So the, one of the big things that we've done is we've restructured Chapter 8, to basically put all the provisions that would apply to potentially anybody in the city first, and then moving the industrial wastewater pretreatment regulations to the end of the chapter, because that's for a very specific sect of the city, and it's also the more complex provisions, because they're dictated by DEQ and EPA. We also checked and refined definitions. We went through and confirmed every single definition in there is being used, and that it makes sense. So we've checked those throughout. We've also made sure to capitalize them, so people who are reading it know that it's a defined term, they understand that they can go look that up. And then finally, we removed any outdated or superseded language. And so, for example, one of the things that we recently just caught, and it's in your packet, is we had some outdated plumbing regulations that we took out and made it consistent with what the Oregon Plumbing Specialty Code is today. With that, we're happy to take any questions.
Counsel, questions on Section 8 revisions? Chapter 8, I guess not Section 8.
Chapter 8.
I wanted to thank you for the additional work that staff put in after I met with staff and talked about some of the difficulty I had reading and understanding this chapter. As I said to staff that day, I think most of our citizens and businesses want to do the right thing. It's very helpful if they can read the code and understand what the right thing is, and sometimes our verbiage is difficult to decipher, sometimes codes are like that, so working to try to be clear what we're doing is important, and I think it's very helpful to the community. Staff did create Attachment C, which is way down on, what, page 190 of 200, I think, in our packet, which is kind of a matrix that talks about, well, what do you need to pay attention to if you're doing this, or if you're doing that? I think that's helpful. I don't know how the rest of the council feels. It's buried all the way down there, past the end of everything else. Whether people will find it there, I don't know. To me, having it maybe up front, you know, when someone is going, oh, here's Chapter 8, and what am I supposed to do? Oh, well, maybe this might help me figure it out. I don't know if it makes sense from a staff standpoint, but personally, I would be happy to see it kind of leading into the whole section, not way down past all the other regulations. I don't know if that's practical or not, or what the legal implications of that chart would be in that way, but from my, very much a layperson's approach, helping me understand what I'm supposed to do is a big piece of what I think we should be trying to portray. So I just put that out there. Counselor Stevens?
Yeah, I would agree with that. It's interesting that you bring that up, because it's the only part that I annotated in my- that I annotated in my board packet of this section. And it's because I'm considering remodeling a bathroom. And so do I need to get a permit if I put in a new toilet? You know, kind of thing. And so as just a resident, you know, a citizen here, you know, I have to think about that. And so because I had to read this, I thought, probably. So that's, you know, I do need to do that. And I probably would have looked at that anyways when I got to that point.
Are you talking about replacing a toilet fixture or adding a new plumbing fixture?
No, just replacing it. Just remodeling it. Remodeling it. So not if I replace it. Oh, so on the same pipe? On the same pipe, you don't have to. So see, but my point is, is that if this was up front and somebody is asking that question, you know, it would be more obvious. So do they have to or not? Probably most people wouldn't. But, and if I move the sink, you know, or make it smaller, move the sinkpipe, you know, then I have to do it, you know. And a plumber would help me do all that and know all that stuff, I'm sure. I'm not going to do that stuff.
And they would know whether or not you need a permit.
And they would know if I need a permit. But the point is taken that, you know, there are a lot of people who do this stuff themselves. And they just, you know, they need to know this stuff. And I think a lot of, it's better if it's, if the information is easily accessible. And having it in a chart form, it's the first thing I went to when I read in the staff summary. We've created Attachment C, which is a matrix to help people find this stuff. I just bounced right to it to say, okay. You know, it's an easy read. So having it more accessible, and maybe that's what you do on the website or something. Because I know you do have to have the text code, and it doesn't make sense to throw this up front, but.
We do have frequently asked questions on.
That's, yeah, maybe that is. And maybe this matrix is one of those things that just comes up as a PDF that answers these and they can, and it's easy, it's such an easy read. It's, you know, especially with the headings you have here. Who does it apply to? Kind of thing. So how does it apply? So.
Yeah, and I'd just like to comment that as of right now, the way that the Chapter 8 is drafted, that is not, this chart is not incorporated as part of Chapter 8. So if that's something that council would like to see, then I think it'd be appropriate to state that in the motion. And I also think that if we include the chart, we would just include a disclaimer at the end saying, this is not necessarily representative of all of Chapter 8, because it's two pages of a 100-plus page document.
Yeah, I think you want to be careful about adding something that's not part of the code into it, though.
Right. But it is a frequently asked question tool.
Correct. And we could definitely work with IT to get it on the website if that's what the council feels is appropriate.
Easy step.
Yeah.
Yep, you can do that.
So I also heard that staff at least maybe broached the topic of whether they, some sort of a printed explainer that could be handed out to people across the counter or at a pre-app or whatever would be another approach. I'm not equipped to judge whether that's appropriate or needed or worth the effort, you know, but I thought that was an interesting idea that maybe staff could evaluate for whether that would be advantageous to have, which is not the code itself, but again, is a question of how people get to what they're supposed to do.
Yeah. We can certainly look at all kinds of options for public education.
Yeah.
So as to this chart, I mean, I hear the concern about the, how it's construed by someone who reads it as it's being the whole legal requirements. I mean, so you have that sort of caution, but then I also think that there's a value in helping people sort of zero in on what they're trying to do. So how, you know, what is the staff's recommendation? Or is this two different perceptions?
Maybe legal has a different one. My recommendation would be that you not put it in the code for a variety of reasons, but that we can make it readily available. We could do all the things that we just discussed. My concern would be if something, and it's a very well-done matrix, but there may be something in there that's in conflict with the code that we just don't know right now, or that code could change. So every time you change something, you have to go back in and amend the ordinance and do public hearings. So I'd say something that doesn't have to be in there should not be in there. That would be my advice.
And I would add that the other change that was made since the work session is on 8.000 subsection 2, where what we did was lay out the four key sections that are in the chapter. And I basically tried to take that chart and put it in sentences. So it lays out what the regulation is, who it would apply to. And then particularly with sanitary sewer and stormwater, some particular sections that might be important for an individual. So the idea is, again, it's not going to be representative of the entire chapter, but it's a good lead-in to somebody reading it of, okay, this is where I might need to go to find what I'm looking for. So I think that that is a good way for it to be in the code, and then we can use the chart, you know, online and at the counter or in pre-apps, that kind of thing.
Okay. For easy access.
So it is in the code, it's just not in the format that is the matrix.
Right.
Yeah. As I said in our meeting, I have an innate aversion, I guess, to 107-page chapter section, of which 42 described how we're going to enforce it. So, you know, I understand staff has concern about how we are able to respond to environmental issues that some people may not perceive as critical or as time-sensitive or as important in their world. And we have to be able to push. Okay, I'm only asking that we balance that by a proactive effort to try to lead them into the right decisions to start with.
Well, that's the approach we take with all kind of code enforcement things, is that we don't go from 0 to 100. You know, we go from 0 to 1, all up the chart. And 99% of the issues are dealt with through voluntary compliance. It's only that rare, very small instance of folks that just dig their heels in for whatever reason. So we have to have that flexibility in the code to address that situation. But your point is well-taken.
All right, I just wanted to make that.
Sure.
Other counsel comments? Okay.
Put on you if you read the whole thing.
Yeah. Very dry. I have not received any speaker cards for public input. Is there any member of the public that would like to speak with regard to this item, Ordinance 818? I see none. This is a first reading. There's no reason to keep the record open to second reading, is there? Ms. Jacobson? Okay. So I will close the public hearing at this point and ask council, what is your pleasure with regard to Ordinance Number 818 on first reading?
Your Honor, I move that we adopt Ordinance Number 818 on first reading.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Move to second at discussion?
No.
We've just had some. I will call for the vote then. All in favor of the motion to adopt Ordinance Number 818 on first reading? Please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes for 0. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Bringing us to Ordinance Number 826, also first reading.
First reading. An ordinance of the City of Wilsonville adopting the 2018 Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Master Plan as a sub-element of the City of Wilsonville Comprehensive Plan, replacing all prior Parks and Recreation Master Plans and replacing Ordinance Number 625.
Hello, Mr. Mayor.
Good evening. I need to do a formal opening, I guess. This is also a legislative formality. So I will call to order the public hearing on Ordinance Number 826. As has just been read, ladies and gentlemen, council will take public testimony tonight in a public hearing format, which will be conducted as follows. First, we will ask for city staff to present their report. Then we will ask for testimony by either proponents, opponents, and those neither in favor nor opposed to the proposed ordinance. If you wish to testify, please complete a speaker card from the counter at the side of the room. Pass it forward to the city recorder. When called, come forward to the microphone. State your name and address and make your statement. Request those giving testimony not repeat testimony already given. Simply indicating your agreement with certain prior testimony is entirely sufficient. Mr. McCarthy?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and city council. Mike McCarthy, your Parks and Recreation Director. I'm here with Brian Stevenson and Todd Blankenship. Tonight, we are recommending that the city council conduct the public hearing, which we just opened, and the first reading of Ordinance Number 826 on the proposed Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Master Plan. I think the history has kind of been out there a lot. We've started this project 14 months ago or so. We did provide a PowerPoint presentation to the Planning Commission back in May, and they extended that. They gave us a lot of suggestions on changes and things, which Brian will go over in a brief PowerPoint here in a few minutes. We did adopt all of those changes and all of those recommendations. We also gave presentation to the city council on April 16th and May 7th and got quite a few feedback, or a little bit of feedback from council as far as things that they'd like to see. I believe we made all of those changes in the document. I do want to say that part of this plan, a lot of people may not realize, it doesn't just take our staff, which was a lot of time. Awesome on was amazing, probably put in more time than anybody, but Brian, Todd also, and even Erica in our department, who came on later, had already started. But the planning department with Chris, Miranda, Charlie, and Tammy were awesome. City Attorney's Office chimed in with things we needed to do and look at. Finance looked at it, too. City Administration looked at it. It's kind of amazing that, how many different departments it takes to make things really come together. But I think we did it, but we'll see what happens, but I think we did it. And when I met with the City Attorney's Office and Finance, we tried to better define what different objectives were related to growth, and we did highlight those. And they're in your document, which we just did probably a couple weeks ago. And the reason for that is, we feel like there's like four funding sources that could possibly make all of these things happen. And that's Memorial Park, Boone's Ferry Master Plan, which will come forward to you in another month or so, and this master plan. And that is the SDCs, of course, and that's related to growth. Also grants, possibly general fund dollars, and also a possible bond that could be on the horizon if that's where the council and city manager wants to go. So with that, I will just let Brian take it over with the, I think it's brief, slide presentation or PowerPoint, and then we'll answer questions from there. Thank you.
Thanks, Mike. So tonight, it will be brief, but we'll go over just what the planning process entailed, highlight the key findings, and then highlight a number of different things. Obviously, the document of itself is quite large, but tonight, we're going to be focusing on the action items and some of those key elements and key themes that we heard both from city council and Planning Commission. Obviously, the purpose of this plan, you know, ultimately, we're just looking for that guiding document that's going to help us with park development, recreation programming, natural resources. So really, this document's going to be our roadmap for the future. We did our best to do as much public outreach as we possibly could. We did surveys. We did focus groups. We were out in the community, meeting with the different users. So our goal was to have this plan represent what the citizens in the community of Wilsonville really wanted. And we feel like we've done a good job with that. Just a few of the key findings that were highlighted and we heard over and over. Obviously, the residents appreciate what we have, but they also have a desire for new amenities, specifically river access. We hear repeated themes of indoor play spaces, synthetic turf. But also with those active, balancing that with the passive. So the protect and the preserve the natural areas and the environment are also very important to those in our community. As part of this process, we also developed a mission for our department. And it was important to include that in this presentation. And I'll let you read it, but I bring this up only to know that everything that you see in these action items and everything through this plan, we really make a point that it comes back to what this mission is for our department. So as Mike mentioned, when we came to work session, there were a few items that council gave feedback on, needed a little more information on clarity, and you had some suggestions on how we could better articulate those ideas within this plan. We'll go through each of these individually, just to highlight where they end up in the plan and what that language ended up being. So the IPM Plan, Integrated Pest Management Plan, gets called out as its own objective. That's page 132. You know, like a lot of these plans, there's a lot of text there. But I will defer to Todd for any questions you might have on the IPM Plan. But it's really a plan that, you know, he's been working hard on. And really, the goal of it is to protect our natural systems while helping us take care of our parks and other city facilities. Any questions on the IPM Plan before we move on? So natural resources, really, the key here was just extrapolating out natural resources as its own objective. It was part of a couple other objectives before. But we felt and agreed with council that it was important to highlight it and make it a standalone objective with a number of action items that further the natural resources here. Any questions on the natural resources? Next was the school district facility list. Obviously, our main focus with this plan was to highlight the city's parks and recreation facilities. So that was our first goal. But the feedback we had was to give a more holistic approach to what we do have in the community and something that represents the community as a whole. So we were able to put together this spreadsheet for you that really does highlight what the school has and what the community as a whole does have in the way of facilities. Any questions?
Counsel Stevens?
Sorry. I was thinking play structures, but you have playgrounds, so that's fine.
That's fine.
Play areas. Open turf. Yeah, no, it's comprehensive. Thanks.
Next would be the joint agreement with the school district. Language here is to review the current agreement and how it's benefiting the Parks and Recreation Department. It does get a bit wordy in the actual objective on page 131, but the key action items there are reviewing what we have to maximize the potential. And then just to be sure that all future partnerships are accurately portrayed in a signed agreement. So we talked about it previously, but just being sure that that joint use agreement is as beneficial to this community as we possibly can be.
And you might want to note for the record that the comments brought up in work session will be carried over into the next reading. The language, suggested language changes.
Sure. So with that said, we will be moving forward with a joint use agreement with some stronger language.
And I believe also making that one of the main priorities is what we talked about, so we will include that in the language.
Synthetic turf. Considering the development of turf, doing what we can to maximize playability year-round. And would also like to note, as part of Action 1.8A, we'll be looking at the health and safety, personal health and safety as part of that and adding that language in. Any further questions on turf? Sports tournaments. Couple different ways we can look at sports tournaments. Sports tournaments, a couple of different ways we can look at sports tournaments. The master plan itself does call out in objective 1.7B, a feasibility study for an indoor sports facility. That's looking at court sports, highlighting what can be done in those wet weather seasons. That also complements the city's Tourism Promotion Committee's five-year plan for tourism development. That master plan or that project plan calls out both an indoor and the potential for an outdoor facility. Really, the limiting factor for an outdoor facility is going to be available space, but both of those are potentials. The other potential, as mentioned in work session, would be something at satellite facilities. Between 12 and 15 fields are available, depending on if you're playing diamond sports or rectangular fields within the community. So there is a substantial number of fields available, they just can't all be at one Planning Commission feedback, a number of these issues were parallel. The IPM Management Plan, the natural resources, synthetic turf, we've already covered. Just wanted to point out to you what the language that was added after they were able to review. Public art, pretty simple, just exploring opportunities to feature public art at various park locations. And I think that's something we support wholeheartedly, depending on what comes of the current consultant's work. And finally, future development. This really just touches on all currently planned areas, Basalt Creek, but also any future areas that might be brought into the city, the UGB, and be sure that we're planning those appropriately for the community's needs. One thing I might point out to you, if you're not familiar with what that last bullet point is, the Willamette Meridian Landing Site, that is a piece of property that is owned by Oregon State Parks that is just east of the city on the river. So essentially, at the end of Montgomery, down in that area.
Is it in the city?
It's not at this point. I say with 99% confidence. I would defer to my planning friends.
It's only accessible, right, from the river. It's only accessible from the river.
At this point, yes. The one thing I would like to point out, too, hopefully in front of you, you do have a sheet that's titled Post Packet Edits. So those will be incorporated. Just a couple small items, really what these, and I'll touch on them one by one. 1.2F, the title of that was just changed to be more accurate to how that project will be referenced. The description was added. Currently, in the master plan copy you have, there was no description, and the dollar amount was there. Frog Pond West Trailhead Park, the dollar amount was adjusted. And then there's one new action item being added. 1.7H, Frog Pond Neighborhood Park, designing and construction of a neighborhood park at a price of $2.4 million, but that will be funded by the developer. And then finally, the current 1.7H, future development will actually push to 1.7I, so we can have that as the last action item in that sentence, or in that section. And with that, we'll open up to any general questions.
Okay. Counselor Starr.
Just real quick on the Frog Pond Neighborhood Park, I just want to make sure I'm understanding a few things. Number one is, it says park, so we're talking one park, not a series of parks, correct? Is that in Frog Pond West, north, east?
Isn't that a reference to the park that Planning Director Namso has negotiated with the school district for, or we're trying to, by the first refusal?
And correct, and that's where this came from, was Chris, who brought that to our attention.
Adjacent to the school.
Correct.
So that's west.
Okay, so it would be west, it would be by the elementary school.
Yes.
And I guess the other question is, it says funded by developer. So it's funded by the school? Is it funded by, because there's multiple owners and multiple developers, so is it a group of developers that are all pushing to one park? Or I just want to understand this.
I think it might be an articulate way of saying that it's going to be funded through SDCs.
Okay.
We can check on that language and clarify it. By the time we bring it back for second reading, we'll give you a better, clearer answer. If we need to adjust that language, we can do so.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure it's one developer and its arbor.
Okay. Wow, okay, got it.
Other questions? Counselor Leahman.
I was, I had mentioned that one other word change on 132, or 133, where it says pesticide management. I really think you meant pest management.
You are correct. So for the record, 3.10A, pesticide management becomes pest management.
Right. And then my other general question on IPM is there, it references IPM, a bunch of places, working with the city departments for creation and implementation. What's the status of the IPM?
So we are meeting internally next week to review what is essentially, hopefully, the final document, and we'll be making some changes, and then we'll be bringing it to you guys to have a look at, I believe, the second council meeting in October.
We'll try to give you as much quality time with that document as we possibly can, because I know it's of interest.
Okay.
Counselor Stevens?
Thanks. So I know, Mike, you said at the beginning that this was a group effort from a lot of different departments, so, and especially finance and planning. So on page 119 and then forward from there is, are the recommendations and action plans, and then the matrix that talks about, you talk about short-term, up to five years, those projects will be done, midterm, six to 10 years, long-term, 10-plus years, and then ongoing. So how confident are you that, you know, especially, some of these are really expensive and paid for from different sources, that the short-term, midterms are actually going to be completed in those timeframes?
Well, I, my personal opinion, I believe the next step is to prioritize these items, and so when you have Memorial Park and the overall park plan, and then Boone's Ferry Park, I think we need to sit down and say, okay, what are termed as short-term, or what are slated as short-term, and where are the priorities there, and then funding next to that, and see where we lay. And as far as midterm, same thing, long-term, same thing. Obviously, council will be involved in that, too. How do we prioritize those things? When you, I mean, who says Memorial Park's more important than Boone's Ferry Park? I mean, you know, or it could be one here and one there. And then we go from there and see what SDCs can cover, what general fund can cover, if there's grants out there, and if it's $30 million and the city council and city manager thinks we should go forward with a bond issue, then we go that route. So there's a lot of variables to look at, but I think prioritizing the items first is what our priority should be to do that, and then we know what we're looking at.
I think that would go through the Park and Rec Board to come up with some recommendations to City Council.
Prioritizing.
You know, based on the master plan, obviously. And then you'll just have to have a frank discussion, whoever's on council at the time, will have to have a discussion about how aggressive do you want to be, because the reality is, parks are general fund, and, you know, there's no magic money out there for it. So you can do so much with SDCs, you can do so much with grants, but the reality is, you're going to have, if you want to be aggressive and you really want to do something significant, you're looking at a GO bond of some sort.
And we should be completed, hopefully, with all the plans, if everything goes the way it's going right now, and hopefully, there's no obstacles, but you never know. With, Memorial Park is obviously done way before when I got here. This plan is close, and Boone's Ferry should be in front of you end of November, early December at the latest, and hopefully, by the first of the year, we can start prioritizing and go from there.
So we hear in the community survey consistently that people want, and Counselor Starr brought up tonight, want more access to the river. So what does that, what does that mean?
Yeah.
How much do they want? It's kind of like the Aquatic Center, right? It was a community priority, it was a council goal to get that on the ballot, and we put it on the ballot, and the, I would say, the enthusiasm wasn't as quite as strong as, you know, it was a bad economy at that time, too, so there's a lot of factors that play into that, so.
Right, but the, an aquatic center and an indoor recreation center is still part of this master plan. It's not like it's been forgotten either.
No, I believe, I believe.
2023, yeah.
And at that time, the population might be, well, I think the critical mass for that, I think they said was like 25,000 or 27,000, something like that, in the feasibility study that we did, but I'd have to refresh my memory.
I was just going to say, I believe, looking at an indoor sports facility is current. And then, you're right, the Aquatic Center is, I think 2023 was recommended to look at it again.
As just an idea, a possible priority.
Correct.
Revisit. Okay, thank you.
So I'm impressed with an awful lot of work that has gone into this and with the sort of global presentation of what we've got and what our opportunities are. I very much like to see that. We had a discussion at work session about wording that says we should do something, you know, are we committing to do it or are we not committing to do it?
We will change that to shall.
So is this a different instance in 3.10C that says we should coordinate with other city departments?
Well, I think we should scour the document for the, just do a word service for should.
Yeah, that might be a good idea between now and second reading.
Or shall. I totally agree with that. That's not a.
Okay, all right. So I'll leave you with that, then. Any other questions, comments from council, for staff?
Are we doing comments also, or just questions?
Just questions now.
Okay.
Then I'm going to ask for the voluminous public input, and then you can ask.
Okay.
All right. Is there any member of the public that would like to make comment? I've not received a speaker card, but I'm open at this time, going once, going twice. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing on ordinance number 826 and ask council, what is your pleasure with regard to this ordinance on first reading?
Your Honor, I move that we approve ordinance number 826 on first reading.
Do you also amend your motion to include all the edits and carryovers from work session into, and as well as the, the post packet edits that were included, and the should to shall?
Please note all of what he said as part of the motion.
Thank you, Counselor.
Second.
All right. Moved and seconded. Discussion. Would the maker of the motion like to comment?
First of all, as you had said, I appreciate all the hard work that you guys have put into this and your desire to pull a lot of what we see here as important from the citizens of this town to help prioritize what we want this to look like, not just, you know, in a year or two from now, but for many years to come. So thank you for your hard work. There is a lot that's going in front of us, there's, with not a whole lot of money on some of this, but I think there's a fair amount that we could possibly do with the private sector to joint venture on some things to get turf fields or maybe some other things built, too. So I'm optimistic that that will be a good part of the future, and I also just want to say, from a standpoint of Wilsonville, parks have been, and recreation activities have been an important part of this town, and it's great to see that they'll stay an important part of the community of this, you know, of Wilsonville. So thank you.
Other comments?
Go ahead.
Counselor Stevens?
The one, the one thing I, sorry, the one thing I do like, you know, your community outreach was fabulous, and I do appreciate all the hard work you did on this. The one thing I really appreciate you doing is doing a random survey, because I think we do a lot of workshops and focus groups and everything, and those are the people who are often always engaged. They care about the city, they do it. But when you do a random survey, you're reaching people who, you know, you're doing, you know, it's selected, who don't always participate, you know, and you get, if you get a statistically significant random survey, it really, it tells you how people, how the whole community feels, because you can, you know, you can really extrapolate from that as opposed to those who use the parks all the time, but when you find out that, even if you don't use the parks a lot, you still care about that. It still makes, it still makes for a great city, even if you're, you know, you're senior and you don't have a dog, and you're just not there a lot, you know, kind of thing. But it enriches a community to have a good park system. So I appreciate that you took the time to do that, because statistically significant surveys are not easy to do, and you have to do them correctly, so they have to be worded correctly, so they're not biased, and so I appreciate the fact that you took the time to do that. That's great. Thank you.
Counselor Leahman?
Yes, I would reiterate a couple of things that have been said. One is, I was really impressed with the amount of outreach and input and the extremely attractive graphs that were done. They're very legible and attractive, and so that's excellent job on that. And then the school inventory likewise, I thought that's as comprehensive an inventory of school facilities, facilities as I've seen, and then the aerials that show exactly what is where at the various school campuses, and it does point out the importance of us coordinating, because these are a lot of community facilities, which of course, the same taxpayers have paid for as the parks, and we need to get the, coordinate with the school district so that all of our citizens get the most out of, out of all these facilities. And along with that, with what Counselor Starr said, I do think there are more opportunities with public-private partnerships, which I hadn't thought about too much before, because I was focused on inventorying the schools, but we have a lot of, well, not a lot, I don't know how many, we have never had inventory, but there are facilities like dance studios, for instance, and our gymnastics studio, and potentially would go along with the notion of a, of an indoor soccer, indoor field space facility, and we discussed this before, that some of those are, are kind of in the neither fish nor fowl zoning-wise, because they are, take more space than your average commercial facility, and yet, and yet, they're not generally allowed in our industrial sites. So it'd be interesting to know how many we have of those kinds of facilities that are also providing that recreation kind of thing from the private sector side, and I know that's, you know, a city like Sherwood, for instance, has a whole bunch of that sort of stuff.
Well, you could include churches in terms of additional gymnasium spaces.
Well, that's true, with gymnasiums, but anyway, it'd be nice to have a, kind of a bigger assessment of what the community has to offer, even if it's not specifically open to the public, you know.
Meeting a need.
Yeah, it's meeting a need. We do have dance classes, we do have gymnastics classes provided on the private side. It would be, be interesting to have as a full community assessment of our recreational offerings. So that was just a top of mind, that's all. But excellent report, plan, and report.
I certainly would concur with all the comments that I've heard. I guess I would like to make one last observation. I think that Wilsonville's geographic position on the edge of the urban area and at the interface with the Willamette Valley and its traditional agricultural area, and the natural elements that we have with the river flowing through town, and multiple different creek drainages that join in, I think that, that all of those have led Wilsonville to have kind of a unique place for our, our interface with the natural world, and I think that this is part of the ethos that people in this community. in this community value very significantly. And that leads me to think that we likewise need to prioritize our plans for these natural areas, you know, as embodied in this parks plan. These are important to the people in our community and they're not just an afterthought and they're not just a well, yeah, you gotta have parks. You know, this is an important piece of of what Wilsonville's place in the world, if you wish, is about. I think a lot of people, you know, relate to that in the community based on what I observe. And and I think that our commitment to preservation and valuing of the natural world here is is something that we need to have in the front of our minds, not just as an afterthought. So I'm very pleased to see this work. I think it's only it only helps us identify the work that's yet to come, which is is maybe the on the ground work, you know, not the the conceptual work. But it sets it up so that we can move into those next steps that I heard Mr. McCartney describe about assembling and prioritizing and figuring out funding streams. And that's good stuff. So I'm I'm very pleased to be at this point. It's the end of one process. It will be just the start of some other processes. So. Anything else? So if there's no further discussion, we have a motion of second on the table to adopt ordinance number eight two six on first reading. I will call for the vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, passes four zero. And we'll look for this back for second reading with those additional pieces of information we have requested. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
That brings us to city manager's business.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick items. And I hope you got a chance to read the letter from the young man. It's very entertaining, very thoughtful.
For the judge.
But, you know, just another example of how, you know, sometimes these policy changes that you make and you get to see the real world impact. It was, I thought, a very well-written letter. And I wanted to thank Pam Munsterman, our staff person that runs the court, for passing that along to me. I said, I think council would be interested in seeing that.
Absolutely.
I did redact the young man's name, you know, for privacy reasons, but it was a very well-done letter. The other thing I want to let you know is that the community survey is done. I've reviewed the draft. And without I don't want to steal Bill Evans' thunder because he's going to be making that presentation first meeting in October, but I think you'll be very pleased with the results. And I think you'll not be surprised about the fact that people are concerned about traffic. So in areas where we were already outperforming our benchmark cities, we've increased almost across the board in terms of people's perception of the services that we provide. So I think I'll be happy to see those results and we're gonna want to get those out to you as soon as possible. So. And the third thing is just a thank you, Mayor, for running such an efficient two public hearings that I told my daughter I was not going to be able to meet her at the airport, but she's getting in at nine thirty. So
You're there.
Guess who gets to surprise his daughter at the airport? So thank you.
You're on the fly.
The way you go through that voluminous public testimony is just unmatched. So thank you.
Get the sub target the whole way through.
Any legal business?
Yes, what Mr. Cosgrove forgot to anticipate was how long my legal business might.
Yes, he doesn't have to stay.
No, you don't.
We'll turn you loose for that, so.
So as we talked about a little bit earlier, there was a case that came down this week that will have some impact on our an older ordinance that we have on our books regarding camping and sleeping on the streets or sleeping in cars around Wilsonville. The case was a Ninth Circuit case that was actually decided this week. It was Martin versus City of Boise. The interesting thing is there is a case that's almost exactly parallel to this case pending before the Court of Appeals, only in that case, the defendant is the city of Portland. And so I'm sure that the attorney representing the plaintiff in that case was doing cartwheels this week when this decision came came down. But so basically, I mean, the case can be summarized pretty easily. The conclusion holds a municipality cannot criminalize such behavior, means sleeping outside, when no sleeping space is practically available. So and they go through the case saying, you know, if there are shelters there and you can absolutely determine that there was ample space in the shelters and it was they were easy to get to and there were no strings attached, like you had to, you know, say prayers in the evening or go to Bible study or something like that, or you could only be there for so many days before you couldn't go in there again, then then you can have some regulations. But unless you can show that, if there's any if there's any doubt, the burden is on the city to show there was there was absolutely other options available. So it's going to make some difference for Wilsonville because we don't have a shelter here per se, that people that are at least a known shelter where people can go to spend the night. I know that the that we have places where people can go for help, but not an overnight regularly open shelter. So we'll have to look at that ordinance. In the meantime, I'm going to be meeting with our chief of police so that we can discuss, given this new case, what kinds of things we can and can't enforce right now. And then we'll be coming back to you with some recommendations. But right now, and just the fact that we have an ordinance that may be overbroad in light of this new decision doesn't make us in violation of anything or subject to any lawsuits. It's only if we try and enforce any part of that that goes beyond what the court would find to be within the parameters of this case. And the Ninth Circuit is our circuit, so this is a binding case. Yeah.
So we had, and I don't know about this summer, I think last summer, we had people sleeping in the doorway of the building in Town Center Park. And question of, you know, what's appropriate is certainly in Portland, you know, which may be this other case, you have multiple issues of people sleeping in the doorways of businesses that are trying to open in the morning and conduct business. So where the balance is between personal rights and the rights of people trying to operate, you know.
Yeah.
So so those are issues where I think the council's gonna need a lot of guidance.
Yes, and and the court doesn't give a lot of guidance in terms of that. They're the court is basically saying people can sleep on public any public property as long as there's no other reasonable option easily or readily available for them. And one of the interesting things that's going on now, there's an article in the newspaper and and I've got to call her because I know the attorney at the city of Portland that's dealing with this issue. But Portland's take is when this case was filed against them was that there had been a previous case that was very similar to this one that came down with the same kind of ruling, but the parties settled it. And so it never came all the way through. It didn't it didn't become law. This one basically made it law. But yeah, the the idea is in Portland, they're saying, well, our ordinance doesn't say people can't sleep on the streets. They can. They just can't move all of their stuff onto the street and set it up as if that's their home base. So the way I read Portland's interpretation is as long as they sleep in a space and and move on during the day and then they might come back to the same space at night or they might go to a different space, but they can't, you know, put a tent there and block the sidewalk and make that a permanent location. We'll see what the we'll see what the Court of Appeals says about that because that will be more front and center in their case, I think. But one of the things that that does is if that's the way they interpret it and saying, well, you can't have a camp over here because if your camp's there, we still give you seventy two hours and then you have to move your camp. But then those people have to move someplace. And the easy place to move is to the doorway, right? If all you're putting in there is your sleep yourself and your sleeping bag or your blanket. And then that gets the businesses more upset because they're right in their doorway. So.
Yeah, so that's on private property.
Well, no, the doorway is on streets downtown. That's still public sidewalk. That's how it's interpreted. Yeah. So so that's that's the issue with and that's why there are so many people sleeping in doorways in Portland because that's the interpretation is as long as you're sleeping there and you get up and move, then then that's that's going to be okay. Now, they can't sleep there and block entrances in or harass customers. Those there's other laws about that. But I mean, what it does, what it does really say to all cities and Wilsonville is fortunate because we don't have a lot of those issues. I I heard you saying there's some camping issues in in vehicles and and that's something else that we can talk about too. But but yeah, I mean, it's going to make cities, especially with big homeless problems like Portland, really have to think about, is it better to designate areas and allow camps and just maintain make sure that they maintain certain standards or to just, you know, go sleep wherever you can find a spot as long as you move and don't camp there?
At some point, does I mean, does it address if you can't block the doorway, you can sleep in the doorway, but you can't block the doorway?
In the morning, yeah, you've you've got to be able to move out of the way.
So this is for buildings that are not occupied at night?
Right.
I guess where the door is.
Right, yes. Yeah. So you couldn't, you know, if a store is open until nine, you can't start sleeping there at seven and make people step over you.
Right.
That would be.
I mean, or any occupied building or building that's occupied because of because it seems like at some point you run afoul of fire exiting.
Mm hmm.
If somebody's working.
And that's what they rely on, health and safety to say you can't.
So if it's an office building, for instance, and some people on the seventh floor are working late at night till midnight or whatever.
Yeah, and but I don't know that they the police would go and and move if if the building is effectively closed and some lawyer is working till midnight and happens to be up on the thirtieth floor and somebody is I don't think a police officer would consider that. Now, that might be inconvenient for the person.
I'm just thinking about the I'm an old fire inspector. So I'm just thinking about the fire code, which is usually very unwavering as as far as exiting. If a building has any occupants in it.
Yeah.
They want every exit open and available.
Yeah. And I'm sure that that is what they will use occasionally if somebody is in a spot that they really shouldn't be in.
Yeah, that that might be occupied.
Yeah. I think in Portland, they've been more focused on moving people that have a lot of, you know, menagerie with them, a lot of stuff. Yeah.
So the camping that I am aware of that's happening is similar to what I hear Counselor Starr mentioning. I have pointed out to the chief several different locations where people are camping in vehicles.
Mm hmm.
And he says they know the rules, they're moving every seventy two hours, and they know they've got seventy two hours before we can get them to move on. And so that is happening in our city now. And the question is, will that become more prevalent if it's not addressed in some way? And is that a priority for us? So I think talking about that needs to be part of our discussion.
Yeah. And again, you know, it's going to be in Wilsonville, we don't have right now that I know of a viable shelter. So if somebody has to sleep in their car, then if they're sleeping in a public spot like on a street in their car, under this case, they can do that. They can't stay. They can't park there and make that their permanent home. Or at least that's one interpretation. That's Portland's interpretation. We'll learn more when we hear what the Court of Appeals does. But certainly, they they and Portland is still giving people seventy two hours notice before they're telling them to move a campsite. So it's it's kind of the same deal. The officers will continue, I'm sure, to give seventy two hour notices if people have been there longer than that. But then they move to the next block and they can stay there. So as you know, as long as they have a viable, reasonable option to go somewhere else, then you can have them move. And they they're not there's nothing in this case that says permanent permanent residency on a city street is okay.
Where did the seventy two hours come from originally?
I think that came I think it well, that was before my time, but my guess is our I think our ordinance was kind of mirrored after the city of Portland's ordinance. And I think there was some language in there about seventy two hours. I'd have to look back at the history because I don't know the answer to that.
So that might be an option optional number. I mean, there's nothing magic about seventy two hours. It could be forty eight or it could be.
Yeah, unless there's something specific in a statute somewhere. I'm not aware of anything, but we'd have to look at that.
Yeah, you just have to be careful about that, I think, because there are lots of people here who park their car on the street, you know, their kids there, and they just don't move their car for seventy two hours.
So parking a vehicle or camping in a vehicle seemed to me to be things you could differentiate in some way. And I don't know how to do that, but.
You have to check and see. You'd have.
And RVs are, you know, I mean, we have some neighborhoods with RVs, you know, four or five to a block. And as you know.
On the street?
No, on the in their driveways or on the street.
We did, yeah, we did an ordinance on the motorhomes or RVs a few years ago because it was an issue.
Right.
But there's a there's a time, you know.
Yeah, we have an ordinance on motorhomes in the street, but it'll be.
But but these are these are in the driveway plugged in and you know some off the street and they're plugged but they're plugged in. They're not under a tarp. You can see they're they're occupied.
And that's another thing that's actually coming up in the affordable housing arena. I mean, I was just at a attorney's conference on that and they talked a lot about ADUs.
Yeah, RVs as ADUs.
But then they also talked the one thing that they have people have and they talked about tiny houses. But then the third item that everybody tries to avoid talking about, but is becoming the bigger issue, is people living in campers or RVs because not for a lot of people, that's affordable housing.
It is. It is.
And so and if it's in, I think there's I think there might be somewhere in Wilsonville, I've heard that there is an RV that parks in a private parking lot and they have permission to do that.
Well, I'm sure most of these have permission. I we don't address it. It's mostly addressed by the homeowners association if there is one, but.
Right, we just regulate the public street.
Yeah, but so we're just looking at the public street. But but clearly, they are they are another piece of affordable housing for a lot of people, our RVs. And so I'm I mean, I'm not saying anything against them. I just am recognizing that that there's increasing number all over the landscape, not just in Wilsonville. Drive from here to Sherwood.
Yeah.
Well, Portland's had the issue with people living in RVs that have become derelict and can't be moved and don't run and, you know, kind of spill out onto the sidewalk.
I'm sure that's the issue on a number of them out in next to the barn, next to the farm, next to, you know, they're they're out on rural lands a lot. And and I don't know that they run or they or can be moved or whatever, but but it's clearly a part of the housing piece that
It is.
that nobody really discusses are the number of RVs on the landscape.
And even living in the car is a step below the RV.
Is a step below.
But that's another that's another form of housing for some people.
So it's recognizing all these different parts to the discussion, you know, that we're going to have to be aware of.
Yeah.
And and some people are living that way and they're going to work every day and trying to figure out how to survive and shower and all those kinds of things. And then they have a full-time job.
Yeah. And in fact, there are people, I can't remember who it was. I think it was my law clerks told me about another one of the law students lived at the rest area that
Right.
right down the because then she had a place to shower and that's where she lived in her car.
They don't have a shower at the rest area.
But she was working and she while she was working, but she could, yeah.
But I know they did have a lot of before they the Baldock, when it was the Baldock, now it's French Prairie, but when it was the Baldock, there were a lot of people, the bus was picking up kids to go to school there.
Yeah.
So they were they were living there in their vehicle, usually in their RVs and going to work in the day. So.
Yeah. And that was so they had a use of a bathroom to clean up.
Yeah, was a bathroom.
Access to water.
Yeah. So it's going to be, I mean, it's obviously, it's been a problem for a long time, but now the problem may shift for cities from would you rather have people sleeping in their cars or in their RVs or on the sidewalk? So.
Okay, well, there's a whole arena that we'll be
Yeah.
looking for your input.
And like I said, as long as we're not doing any and as long as our police are acting reasonably, we should be fine. We do. We do need to relook at our ordinance and and do it, but it's not something that's critical that has to happen tomorrow. And I am going to work with the chief tomorrow. And then I will also reach out to Tracy at Portland and get her take on how that case in front of the Court of Appeals is moving and when the decision might come down on that because
I'll give some more guidance.
that'll make a big difference in what happens here.
Okay. Anything else? I guess we will then call that a wrap at 8:41. Thanks very much.